We'll call a meeting to order.
And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Rice, would you care to lead us in the pledge?
West, you're muted.
There we go.
Okay.
Finally, if you'll join me in the pledge, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, so, um, let me explain some things real quick.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, uh, we don't have an invocation listed on this agenda today. And, uh, one of our commissioners, I understand, had a medical procedure. I think it would be only appropriate that we acknowledge that and, uh, and pray for his, uh, recovery from that medical procedure. Okay?
You're right. And, uh, due to the exigent circumstances and a common courtesy to Commissioner Noah Sad, and I'm sure all the other commissioners would agree, there's been some items that really require all of us to participate in. And hence, we've moved those to, uh, the next meeting. And of course, we all wish, uh, Commissioner Noah Sad well. I don't know much about what's going on. It's a very minor procedure and, uh, should he maybe be through with it already? I don't know. So it's not, it's not a serious thing. Uh, but all of these things are, can be serious. So, um, that's the reason for some of the changes in the, uh, the agenda items.
Well, you said we're gonna go on the next meeting. Is that the one or two weeks we're gonna add them then?
Yeah, we'll put them in there.
Okay.
And some of these items, they, uh, they have a time requirement. Um, so we've put them into this meeting and, uh, so what we'll do is, uh, we'll just go ahead and, and go through this. Um, can we get an approval of the agenda? Would somebody?
Chairman?
Yes.
We need to have public comment before we undertake any business, including the approval of the agenda.
Oh, you're right.
Sure.
I'm working off of two screens. All right. Is there any public comment?
Chairman, is there, did you want to allow me to say something before public comment started?
Yes, this is, this is where you have, uh, a presentation. So, Mr. Ritchie from the DA's office, you have the floor.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Uh, this isn't so much as a presentation as just an explanation of the rules for public comments. Um, under both NRS Chapter 241, which is Nevada's open meeting law, and the guidelines adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, public comment is restricted to those matters that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Therefore, therefore, public comment is limited to the policy issues the county commissioners have the ability to influence and control. Public comment on a UN resolution involving Syrian refugees or global climate change is inappropriate as are public comments on someone's choice of clothing or preference for wearing hats. Similarly, the Attorney General's Office has issued opinions confirming the public bot comment is not a form for individuals to make personal attacks. For example, if someone believes an elected official has violated Nevada's ethics law, then a report should be made to the Nevada Commission on Ethics. The Board of County Commissioners does not have the power to remove or criminally charge an elected official. Similarly, if someone believes that there have been campaign finance irregularities by an elected official, a report should be made to the Nevada Secretary of State who, with the assistance of the Nevada Attorney General's Office, has the authority to investigate issues related to campaign finance. The Board of County Commissioners does not have jurisdiction or control over matters involving campaign contributions. It is also important to remember that under Nevada's open meeting law, if someone's character, competence, or alleged misconduct is going to occur, the law requires that the person who's going to be attacked receive advance written notice that their character or competence is going to be discussed. That can be found in NRS 241.033. In summary, if a member of the public does not like someone, the hats they wear, how they vote, or who they associate with, then they are free to write a letter to the Record Courier. The Board of County Commissioners does not have jurisdiction or control over who people may or may not like. The Board of County Commissioners are focused on policies, not personalities. Under Nevada's open meeting law and the county's guidelines for public comment, public comment must be related to policy decisions the Board of Commissioners may collectively make today or in the future. Thank you, Chairman.
And, uh, Mr. Ritchie, this would include comments regarding the United Nations?
That is correct. This board does not have jurisdiction control over the UN or UN resolutions.
So it's just things that are germane to our county. All right. Well said. I think everybody's probably clear on that. Um, so now we'll go to the approval of the agenda.
Wait, Chairman, now, public comment needs to be open. Sorry.
Oh. Okay. Natalie, do you have any public comment?
Uh, Natalie Wood, for the record, um, today we're doing public comment a little bit different than we have in the past. We will be doing it through our Zoom participation, which that information was provided in the agenda. Um, I have sent out a message requesting that those that would like to provide public comment to chat with me, and I have a few of them there. Additionally, if you are not able to chat, you can raise your hand, um, to ask to be unmuted. Um, so I will go through a list. I do have three that have requested to do opening public comment at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Page.
Um, before we start public comment, I think you need to indicate which items on the agenda you're going to allow public comment. We have three and seven on the agenda. If you want to indicate whether or not you're going to allow public comment on those items.
Um, we can allow a public comment on both of those items.
Perfect. Thanks.
I've gotten a lot of feedback on, uh, on the, uh, which one, number three.
And then Natalie, for the record, I do have three that have noted that they want to provide public, open public, public comment. Um, do you want to start with that? I have a list and we'll go through them in the order they're received. Anyone that has, um, that's calling in, they will be played, um, I'll unmute them after we go through those that are participating through video and audio through Zoom. Um, so the first one that I have is Lisa Granahan. Um, so please state and spell your name for the record, and then I will start your three minutes.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is Lisa Granahan, G R A N A H A N, Economic Vitality Manager, for the record. Um, I had something I just wanted to share with Commissioners and the public. You might have seen our press release on this or seen it in social media, that the county has purchased a sizable order of PPE, that's personal protective equipment, and that is to be made free to our businesses and nonprofits within Douglas County. And I really want to thank, uh, the Chamber, the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce for stepping up and being willing to help us distribute that to all businesses and nonprofits. Uh, the PPE includes things like masks, both disposable and washable, uh, disposable face masks, safety goggles, hand sanitizer, disinfectant spray and wipes, and, um, non-latex gloves. Uh, those aren't in yet, but, um, hopefully we'll have those in soon. And this, um, is made possible, the funding, through the CARES Act. To place an order, you can go to the link on the county's homepage or on the Carson Valley Chamber's, um, homepage. And I just heard from Alicia Mainz, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce in the Valley, that she has sixty-seven orders that have been placed and she's in the process of filling them now. And businesses and nonprofits don't need to be members of the Chamber of Commerce to be able to get the free PPE. And I want to ask you to do the same thing that I'm doing. When you go to a small business or any business, uh, spread the word. I was, uh, when I was at my hairstylist, she was giving me a disposable mask to wear there so I wouldn't get my mask, um, you know, soiled. And, um, I was able to, she doesn't normally get her information on the channels where, that, you know, maybe we put it out on. So I shared the information, uh, with her and she was quite grateful. So I'm asking anybody who visits small businesses, if the opportunity comes up, you know, just share that information. And if people have questions, they're welcome to call me, or I'm sure Alicia at the Chamber of Commerce would be happy to get a phone call as well. So thank you for your time.
Uh, if I may, Ms. Granahan, well said, um, when, how much of the quantity did we receive? Quite a bit?
Well, the, the value of the order was approximately fifty-five thousand. So, you know, that breaks down, uh, it, it's pretty good sizes of, you know, amounts of gloves and masks. Some things are smaller, like face shields. We didn't think there would be as much demand on those. Um, but it, it should be enough. Some quantities will be limited. So we can make sure everybody has some, but we do encourage businesses to get on there and get their orders placed and to spread the word.
Excellent. That's a, uh, substantial quantity. Thank you very much.
We were glad to be able to do it.
Any questions or anything of Lisa? Ms. Granahan, thank you very much for that. And it's most helpful.
Okay, the next person that I have on the list is Jim Slade. Jim, please, um, start by stating your name and spelling it for the record, and then I will start your three minutes. Um, I've asked you to unmute yourself.
Jim Slade, S L A D E. Thanks to Chairman Engels, the county manager, or whoever, finally allowed these board meetings to be Zoom meetings for everyone. Obviously, it wasn't that hard, was it? By your comments earlier this month, this was done in law residence, which is appropriate in the longstanding county procedure for allowing public comment on each agenda item as it is being considered. The previous chairman, Mr. Penzel, seemed to look on public comment as something to be barely tolerated, was more than happy to use the pandemic as an excuse to limit it, which was an affront to our citizens. I'm pleased that the new board is more welcoming of comments with, from your constituents, as you should be. You should be glad for the opportunity to hear from the residents that you represent. I'm baffled and confused, though, by what is written in public comment about, about public comment in today's agenda, where it states that additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual items at the discretion of the chairperson. How is the public supposed to interpret that in advance of the meeting? Let's say I wanted to comment on item three today, an action item. Should I wait for that to be discussed by the board? Should I plan for that? And hope that the chairman will allow the, use his discretion to allow public comment then? That makes no sense. If I prepare my comments in advance, I would have to do so for the start of the meeting. So that process needs to be clarified and the public should know in advance. The best solution would be to allow public comment during consideration of each and every agenda, action agenda item, as has always been done until very recently. As to agrihoods that were originally on today's agenda, there's nothing inherently that I object to in the concept of agrihoods. Seems like a reasonable idea to try. I do have a couple of concerns, though. First, while the concept sounds good, I question what the demand for homes in an agrihood might be. Will people be drawn to the farming aspect? Will they be willing to pay the high prices to be charged to live in such a densely populated, large planned development? Maybe, maybe not. Secondly, and more important to myself and many others in the community, are agrihoods designed in large part to allow an increase in density over what is currently allowed by the master plan land use designation and zoning? If the agrihood is willing to work within the confines of what is currently allowed, including clustering with its hundred and fifty percent bonus, then many residents could and would support it. But if the developer of any agrihood wants an increase in density over what they currently have, that would be a deal killer. Given that, why would the board choose to add new code sections or even have this discussion on agrihoods? Nothing prevents agrihoods now. Any addition to the county code or master plan for agrihoods should include the requirement that the density cannot be increased. Clustering is always a good way to go and provides significant advantages. Anything beyond that is unacceptable. Thank you.
Perfect timing, sir. Thank you, Jim.
You sound surprised.
Yours on, it just went off right when you ended, so thank you.
Natalie, may I respond to part of what Mr. Slade was talking about?
I would defer to the district attorney to answer that.
Well, this is more the procedure using people on Zoom. And, you know, we're gonna try to get participation like it was an in-person meeting like we used to have. So, that, that may answer that part of it. Thank you. I'm sorry. Do you have any others?
Yes, um, I have Barbara Smallwood that wanted to provide public comment. So I will ask her to unmute herself. Barbara, um, please unmute yourself and then state your name and spell it for the record, and then I will start the timer. Barbara, are you there?
I don't see her on my screen, Natalie.
She does not have, um, video, but she was chatting with me earlier. Um, she is unmuted, but I don't hear anything from her.
Mr. Chair, could we possibly go on if there's another one and come back to Barbara Smallwood, if that would be appropriate?
Yeah, we can do that. Are there any other comments, Natalie?
Um, those were the only three that had noted that they provided public, wanted to. I do have a number that called in, um, that I'm not able to chat with, so I can unmute them and see if they want to provide public comment.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, we'll move on. So I just requested that the caller unmute themselves if you would like to provide public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I'm David Sylvian Chakowski, and I'd like to know if our issue is being tabled to next month. Um, it's the fourteen forty-four Pittman Terrace, I mean, it's the Pittman Terrace, um, community.
No, that's, that's being voted on today.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That's my only comment at this time.
Okay. Let me double check, uh, the, the list and make sure I don't have any other numbers calling in. Okay, I don't have any other phone numbers calling in or anyone else that has requested to provide public comment at this time.
Natalie. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Um, on my screen, it shows a Marcus with her hand raised and also a Barbara Smallwood with her hand raised.
Okay, perfect. I will, um, let's go back to Barbara and see if we're able to get her going. Barbara, do you want to try again? And Barbara, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm gonna move on to Marcus. Okay, Marcus.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Do you have public comment?
I, I sure do. This is Marcus Zinke, uh, Z I N K E is how you spell the last name. Um, this was certainly planned to be, uh, a little more inflammatory than it will be after the, uh, District Attorney's Office message there that he gave at the beginning that I did catch the tail end of. But I would request that, um, if, if we are supposed to be held to a standard, then the commissioners should certainly be held to a standard and, um, without naming names, to use your personal time at the end of, uh, previous meetings in discussing what you would like to see in the county, to use that time to bash a school district and to, uh, have some fairly inflammatory comments towards a school district when they are also not able to, as this person put it, defend themselves. Um, I think that's grotesque, to say the least. And, uh, you had just finished your Ethics Committee, uh, meeting that was a presentation, and you were told how these meetings work. And although it sounded like you were trying to be, uh, uh, within the law, it certainly wasn't the case. And so I just, I would request that, as commissioners, um, you guys hold yourselves to that same standard. And to, uh, bash a school district over comments that are, uh, potentially hearsay and that the school district couldn't defend themselves, it's, it's completely reprehensible. And I would expect, at the very least, an apology, um, certainly. Thank you.
Okay, I will try Barbara Smallwood one more time. Barbara, are you able to, um, speak? Do you have any audio? Okay, I'm not getting anything from Barbara. Um, so if Barbara would like to contact our office to troubleshoot at a different time, I'm not able to troubleshoot during the meeting, um, but I can provide, um, some assistance outside of the meeting for a future public comment if she wants to text or chat it to me. I'm not sure if the commissioner, um, would like to, um, for me to read it to her. Um, how would you like?
Yeah, if she can get into you, we can, we can take it at the end.
Okay. So Barbara, if you wanted to add it to me, um, I can speak it for you at the end.
Commissioner Tarkanian, you have something?
Yeah, I, one thing is you, I tried to unmute sometimes and it says I can't now. Is there a reason why you do that to me?
Yes, so the, um, mute option is not available now that we're doing our participants, that anybody can participate. Um, it's so that not, and it's so, so that everybody can't just mute and unmute themselves. It's free will. So I'm trying to keep you guys unmuted as we go through. Um, but if you do raise your hand or shoot me a chat, I will be able to unmute you, and I'm trying to monitor that as we go.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to address the last comment. Um, what the Doug Ritchie stated was that they were gonna make comments about breaking the law, that there had to be notice and then time to respond. And then he makes those comments again, and there's no, um, decision to have, um, him stop those comments when he violates that. Uh, and I don't want to go back and forth. I'm sure there'll be a lot of people that are gonna have negative things to say about me. That's their choice in public comments. But when they say things, uh, such as that I broke the law and that either should be stopped or I should have a chance to respond to those things. Everything I stated about the public health and safety of our children in high school is very relevant to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, and, uh, my statements were appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Tarkanian, um, you're on record with that. And in the spirit of what Mr. Ritchie presented, we all understand that we try to abide by and adhere to a, a certain protocol and decorum, uh, towards the public and towards one another. So, and when we start to deviate into areas where we have no jurisdiction, um, that's when we start getting into trouble. So, um, I, I hear what you're saying, and I've seen it all. And so, uh, let's just try to move on and take care of the county's business and put that aside and, um, move on from here. I don't know what else to say on it other than this. We've got county business to take care of, and that's it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner Gardner.
Uh, maybe Mr. Ritchie. Maybe Mr. Ritchie can give me some direction. I have some questions here. It's my understanding that this section of the agenda is meant for public comment and not for a back and forth exchange between the commissioners and the public. Am I mistaken on that?
Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. That's an excellent question, Commissioner Gardner. Public comment is limited to, as I indicated, items within the jurisdiction control of the board. A commissioner may provide public comment. And also, commissioners are also able to ask clarifying questions of people during public comment. In other words, the board is not prohibited, members of the board are not prohibited from asking follow-up questions to members of the public. However, if I may suggest, because of the current situation we're in and difficulty, we're not live, it's difficult to have a dialogue. And it makes it very difficult for Natalie and for Chairman Ingles to run the meeting when there's a dialogue back and forth. I'm not saying that's not legal or proper, it's just the logistics of doing that is difficult. I hope that answered your question, sir.
It, it does, thank you very much, Mr. Ritchie, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, this is an experiment, this is the first meeting where we are allowing the public into Zoom to present their cases about different things. And we hope that in the spirit of it, that everybody will stay focused on agenda items and not deviate from that. So, let's just move on. And Natalie, where are you at with Barbara Smallwood? She ever managed to get back in?
Yes, Natalie Wood, for the record, she sent me a chat that I'll read on the record for her. So Barbara Smallwood has noted, "Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and other elected officials, staff, and the public. Thank you for the new format for public participation. Happy New Year, stay strong, and thank you." And that is it.
Okay. Anything else after that?
I have not received any additional chats or raised hands. I do not see that anyone else has public comment at this time.
Okay. I have to switch screens here. I don't know where I'm at on the agenda until I get out of this thing. Okay. We're ready for approval of the agenda? Can I get a motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Mark Gardner, for the record, I will, for possible action, approval of the proposed agenda, I will move for the approval of the agenda as revised and most recently published to the public, which strikes item A and B. Well, anyways, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda, is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gardner to approve, and a second by Commissioner Tarkanian. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Is that a nay?
No, no, I, I thought we had a, okay.
That was just a body function.
I, no, I do have a question after that, the, after that, after the, after that is announced, then I have, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
So we have the approval of the agenda? And now the previous minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question before we go any further.
Okay, you have the floor.
Commissioner Tarkanian asked a question earlier regarding those items that had been removed from today's agenda and whether or not those would come forward, I believe he said in two weeks. And it's my understanding that we have a special meeting called for next Thursday where we will address the items that were removed from today's agenda. Am I mistaken on that?
No, you're, you're correct.
Well, Mr. Chairman, then I-
Yeah, go ahead.
Then I got a problem because I'm gonna be driving back to Las Vegas with my entire family to go to the celebration life of my best friend who passed away in early December. So I will not have a session to do a Zoom meeting unless we, we can do it. I gotta be on the road by 2 o'clock, I can do it as long as it ends by 2:00, if not, I'm gonna-
Now, that's, out of common courtesy, we'll reconsider all of this and it may go on to the next board meeting scheduled and, and get in sequence with the typical board meetings. Does everybody agree to that?
I'm fine. I'm good.
It doesn't have to be a vote, just an understanding. All right.
Okay, so, so just so we're clear to the public, there will be no special meeting next Thursday, and all items that were postponed from this particular agenda will be postponed until the first Thursday, our regular meeting in February, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Approval of the previous minutes? Do I hear a-
Chairman, I move that we approve the draft minutes of the Board of Commissioners's special meeting on December 9th, 2020.
Commissioner Rice has brought forth a motion. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chair, I will second that, understanding that Commissioner Tarkanian and I were not members of the commission at that time, so we have to take it at the word of Chairman Ingles and Commissioner Rice that those minutes are appropriate.
Is, is that a second?
Yes, it is a second.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Rice and a second from Commissioner Gardner on approval of the previous minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion is carried. And moving on to the consent calendar?
I think we need to approve the minutes for December 17th also.
Oh, we have to do them separate, good point.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular board meeting on December 17th, 2020. Once again, I'll second that also.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Rice and a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion is carried. Okay, have we approved all of the previous meetings?
No, we, we need January 2-
January 2nd.
That was a January 2nd.
No, no, that's-
21. That's today.
That's just the page number, I think.
Yeah. Okay. We're done on that. Okay, the consent calendar. All of those have been moved, and it will be coming up in the next board meeting. Mr. Ritchie, do we need a vote on this?
Chairman Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office? No, the, the record's clear during the approval of the agenda that all those items except for the two indicated, number three and number, number seven have been continued.
Okay. So we will go to community development. Item number three. For possible action, discussion regarding the possible formation of a special assessment district to acquire fire protection facilities in the Pittman Terrace subdivision in Glenbrook, Nevada. This item will include, without limitation, discussion and review of any objections to the formation of the district. The board may discuss whether forming a special assessment district to acquire the aforementioned improvements is in the best interest of Douglas County. The board may also discuss whether they would prefer to acquire the improvements directly without forming a district or whether the county should fund some percentage of the improvements outside the special assessment district. The total upfront cost for the improvements is estimated 185,347.80, which would be equal to the assessed owners over a 10-year period. Jeremy Hutchinson, you care to take the floor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. So Jeremy Hutchings with Douglas County Community Development and Engineering. I'm gonna share my screen here, so hopefully you'll see a little, hopefully you can see this screen up here with the header of Pittman Terrace Special Assessment District. We're gonna just go over a little brief summary for some of the newer members. Back in December, the board approved the provisional order to make a notice to create the special assessment district. It's kind of an involved process. And those notices went out from, for, in three formats, certified mail, newspaper, and a physical posting on-site, projects located in the Glenbrook area. The special assessment district, just for the benefit, just to cover a little background, it basically, in the Pittman Terrace area, private individual, Mr. Chris Sauer, constructed a water line right here where they're, later pointed showing, and a fire hydrant, and a giraffe stand pipe in order to, to help enhance the fire protection in that area. The cost that you've already gone over, Mr. Chairman, would be borne out by 22-member parcels as highlighted in yellow if the district were to be formed. And it would be over a period of 10 years, so it would be an assessment of $847.49 per year over a 10-year period paid back to the county. The county would bear that initial capital cost. So that's basically the project is to acquire these, this water line improvement. So for today's meeting, the main point is for the board to review the objection, objections received to date from the 22-member parcels in the district. Based on the timing of the noticing, some objections are, we had to get the objections received by Monday, which is actually a federal holiday, so that extended the deadline till this past Tuesday. And as of that date, we received 15 objections to forming the district. 15 of the member parcels object to it. That's about 68% of the total. Naratorized statutes referenced here precludes the formation of the district if at least one-third of the member parcels object. And so that, that test has been met, we exceed the one-third, so we're precluded from forming the district as it was suggested. So just some general discussion here, gentlemen, is again, more than one-third of the member parcels are objecting to forming a special assessment district. So this precludes the board from forming it. You may consider if you'd like to acquire the improvements directly and, you know, not through the district, or whether the county should acquire or pay for, you know, a portion of that instead of the whole thing. And you could discuss that amongst yourselves, or I'm happy to ask, answer questions regarding it. But that's some discussion be, I'd like to have the board make if, if you're still interested in seeing merit in the project. And I think the gentleman, Mr. Sauer, that installed the improvements would like to hear that discussion as well, and you could direct staff to go back to, to discuss that with Mr. Sauer. So the recommendation here is that, first thing is to make sure you reviewed all the objections. And since that their objections were received exceed that one-third threshold, we recommend, staff's recommending that not forming the district, that's not forming the district. And then the board to consider whether we should acquire it directly or some percentage of it. I know it's kind of a, some of you have seen this before, so I kind of ran through it quickly. Hopefully that's enough of a overview for the new board members to consider. I can flip back to the map and take any questions if, if I've gone too fast or you don't, you know, if you have any questions on the, on the matter. That, that's our recommendation for, at this time.
Look, I have one important question. It's my understanding that these faulty pipelines, the ones that aren't up to code, extend all the way to the state line from there to Glenbrook, is that correct?
Well, I know, I don't have in-depth knowledge of exact locations of all the water lines in that area, Mr. Tarkanian. The, the one we're talking about right now is just this little length of dry line that the fireboat would connect to. So there are water systems in, certainly in the Tahoe area, in Glenbrook area. The problem with them is they're, they're old and too small to support the fire flows that current construction requires. Does that answer your question?
Well, no, because I'm concerned with what's gonna happen if we set a precedent here and pay for, and offer to pay for part or all of this pipeline when there's gonna be the same issues going on for miles of pipeline to the state line. Now, from what I understand-
Oh, I see.
Mr. Sauer had to pay for this whole thing because he pulled a permit. And when he pulled the permit, it was exposed or disclosed, I should say, that this pipeline wasn't strong enough to really put out any fires in this area, which to me means there's a huge fire risk to every single one of these homes here, not just Mr. Sauer's. I'm surprised that this would be allowed to continue if it was made known because you're creating a fire hydrant like Paho, which certainly doesn't need any more fires there. I would also think that all these members that are voting no and paying for their fair share of this pipeline would understand that they are now put on notice that the pipeline that's currently in there, that they would use, is not sufficient to put out any fires. And if a fire did happen at their home, in all likelihood, they would not get any insurance proceeds from it because they would be contributory negligent in not providing the necessary pipeline to put out the fire. I think it's a much higher risk for these homeowners, and I'm not sure if these, I don't know how many you said voted against it, understand their liability towards this thing. I don't believe it's fair to Mr. Sauer to pay for the entire project, but I see if the county pays for part of it, we're, part of it, we're gonna be doing this all the way throughout this area, which, as I mentioned, could be so costly, expensive, it would cause big damage to the budget of our county. Mr. Sauer shouldn't have to be paid for it all. The homeowners who don't want to pay for it, they certainly have their right, but I would think that they are noticed now that they do not have the proper means to put out a fire in their homes, and they would be contributory negligent, that's my feeling.
Yeah, so I, I guess, one of the engineering questions, maybe I can answer for you, Mr. Tarkanian, is if there's other areas like this, and I can, I can tell you, there are some, I've worked on them in the private sector specifically, so I am aware of other areas that do have this similar problem. It's not necessarily uncommon, I don't, I can't quantify it beyond that for you, though.
If I may interject, the county in the last couple of years have done an exhaustive update in regard to the county water systems and rates and so forth. And the areas that were a particular concern were Cave Rock, Skyline, and I think it was Zephyr Cove in their water systems. They were dilapidated and in dire state of repair. The county had obligated to take them over. It got so bad at Cave Rock, the Cave Rock residents sued the county to get going and get that project going, because the water mains there cannot, they're so dilapid- get that project going because the water mains there cannot, they're so dilapidated, they can't carry enough water for any kind of fire suppression. So the point being is, is that there is, there are some progress being made right now as we speak, and we're going to come up for a vote on one of the items, on number seven, the bond for the Cave Rock water system. We can't do it all at once, but I'd like the chief to make some comments in regard to this because he's the guy out there that's going to have to fight the fight. And I know from being in combat, fighting a fire is similar. You throw everything you've got at it to knock it down, and being up there with those pine trees, those things can crown out and be an absolute nightmare. So chief, you have the floor. What is your position on this?
Thank you. Am I live mic? Okay, good. Thank you, you can hear me. Certainly, yes. Fire flow is paramount. It's, fire flow is the water we use, is the ammo we use to fight fires, kind of like the, the previous situation there without Chris Sauer's intervention. We would have been like storming the beaches of Normandy with a squirt gun. There was a, partly the county, its involvement goes back, I don't know if you were able to review Chris Sauer's letter, but there was a lot split that took place, including partially Chris Sauer's parcel. And so those lots were split, and they were allowed to split under the county government at the time, with the exception to put a hydrant in. Now, that hydrant was not a hydrant that met fire flows or even came close to meeting fire flows at the time. So that development and that, those lots were able to be split out. And that kind of set the course for where we're at today. Chris Sauer went to pull a permit, and of course, that hydrant wasn't allowed under, under code, fire code. They don't have the fire code requirements for fire flow. So all the homeowners were noticed at the time. We did have a meeting, and, and we spoke about this particular neighborhood. And Commissioner Tarkanian is correct, there are some areas here. There's a hundred and twenty-eight of these residents in this area from roughly Cave Rock up to Glenbrook or up away. And that area is, is extremely deficient in fire flow. They don't have it. And some of those homeowners have bought into this fire flow initiative program that the fire district was able to put forth. What that is, is it's a fireboat program. It's a floating hydrant. The fireboat, it's on the lake twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. It's a true fireboat in that it has a fire pump on it, very similar to the fireboats they have in San Francisco at a lesser scale. It can pump water to these areas that are in conflagration. Our concern is we get a conflagration, a large fire breakout in these homes here because the, the way they're built, they're very tight and compact in those parcels. The road access is very poor. We would have to get multiple engines down there, water tenders down there, water shuttles to provide water. The fire flow that's needed is a great deal of water, and it's just not available by any other means. So Chris Sauer put this, put this pump, or I'm sorry, looked at putting a pump in, and that would have been a great cost for that, for this neighborhood in his area. So he did look at that, and he looked at buying into the fire flow initiative. So part of that is a membership program. They buy, buy into the program at seventy-five thousand. That's their portion of the boat, which is a five-hundred-thousand investment from the fire district and the community. But we need to have that stand pipe, that pipe for which we can pump the water through to get up to the, to the houses. So the boat pulls up and it pumps into that pipe. So all these homes here would benefit from this stand pipe. The county, like I said, allowed some lot splits and some development to occur at one time under a, a fire hydrant. In all intents and purposes, it was a fire hydrant, but it was hooked to a very small pipe that would produce forty gallons a minute as opposed to the one thousand five hundred gallons a minute that's required by code. So that was the deficiency that was there at the time. Chris Sauer wanted to develop his home. He did, and he did put the money forward, but all of these residents benefit from this stand pipe system, as does the county in the fact that if a fire were to start here, it would likely run up slope into the forest, and we would have a major conflagration that would occur. So really catching it fast, fighting fire aggressively with safety in mind is key to this, and it's important that we have all this, all these neighbors partner together so that we can utilize this pipe. This also reduces the insurance rates for the community as a whole because our ISO rating drops down because we have the ability to provide that fire flow, and we have the firefighters on staff capable of fighting these fires. So this community is benefiting from this program, and I think Chris Sauer is just asking for some compensation for, for the work that he's done. Initially, those conversations came about where we talked to the county, and this was actually built on a county parcel. So the county has a partnership in the fact that they've already partnered, they've, they've given a contribution, allowing them to use that, that parcel. That certainly has some value to it, and I think that that might be the, some of the county's contribution towards establishing this, this district. You know, I don't know the best way to do that. My hopes were the neighborhood would, would embrace this and everyone would take part in that. That meeting did not take place with success. We were able to notify several of those members that lived down there. They also were, many of them have chosen to participate and then have rescinded that offer. It's been very messy. The homeowners association is pretty much defunct in this neighborhood. You know, they have a lot of other issues in relationship to that, but really, this, this is a paramount. Again, it's a paramount thing for their safety and their community, and their insurance company may drop them.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question? Tarkanian, Mr. Tarkanian, you have the floor.
Miss, I guess I'll call you Mr. Chief. Did these homeowners in this area participate in the initial seventy-five thousand dollar contribution for the water, both hydrant, for lack of a better phrasing?
Thank you, Commissioner Tarkanian, yes. So we have, Chris Sauer was one of the first. We do have a second parcel that has bought into that program because they, they did new construction. So anytime there's new construction, it enacts that code, as you know, as they pull a permit, something you're familiar with. So when they pull that permit, that's what puts them into the fire code.
But all these other people that are voting no now, I don't know, the twenty-two members that are voting no now, did, did they participate in the seventy-five thousand dollars for the use of the water fire hydrant, or are they just looking for...
No, they didn't. And, and they would benefit, as I explained to Chris Sauer, the fire department's not going to let this neighborhood burn. We will use that pipe. We will use that pipe and fight fire aggressively for any of the homes in that area, which does not seem fair to Chris Sauer because he's, you know, he, he obviously spent it, and we're using his, his device to...
How can you use, how can you use his pipe if, if he owns it and it's private?
Because the fire code allows us to do that. It's, it's for fire purposes, and also it protects his home as well. So if his neighbor house burns, it could burn into his house and cause the whole neighborhood to go. So he realizes that, you know, and it, he had the right idea in, in trying to get the neighborhood behind him. He can charge fees. We can actually charge insurance companies if we use that in the event of an emergency, if we were to use that. He would be similar to any other water purveyor, and he can charge them for use of his pipe in the event of that emergency. But he couldn't deny the fire department the right to use that pipe. It's basically for us and for fire purposes.
Thank you, chief. Do any of the commissioners have anything more?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Rice, go ahead.
There I go, she finally unmuted me. Actually, this question is more for Mr. Ritchie. It would seem to me from, from my understanding that our hands are tied since there was so many people there that objected to the assessment district, and that we are now down to about two options. Is that correct, sir? Doug, you're muted. Doug, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Natalie. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. That's correct. We would have, under the statutory scheme, there is enough opposition from the homeowners that the board cannot proceed in this way. The board does have the option to basically start over, renotice, and if the county contributes fifty percent of the cost of these, of this infrastructure, then the special assessment district could be formed, notwithstanding the opposition of the neighbors.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, another, another thing I'd like to point out is that the county has contributed time to this project, as well as they've also contributed the, the parcel that this pipe sits on. So that has value to it as well, and I'm not sure what that can be. Doug Ritchie might know more, but there's already, you know, there is some, you've got some skin in the game. So that, be that what it may, but there is a, you've already got some partial interest in this situation.
Mr. Ritchie, could we add the cost or the value of the land that we have contributed, the county has contributed already, to the total amount so that the fifty percent that the homeowners are paying will be more than the actual fifty percent of the pipe, but also include the land, too?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, you have the floor, Mr. Ritchie.
Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. It's an interesting question. If the county acquires this asset, the county could impose a, you know, a value for the, basically the right-of-way, the, the use of county property. Typically, though, the county doesn't charge a developer or someone that's providing infrastructure to the county for the county's contribution, like staff time or property.
But, Mr. Ritchie, they're not providing the infrastructure if we have to pay half of it. They're only providing half of it. What I'm trying to do is see is there a way that we could increase their share because they're the ones benefiting and decrease the cost to the county because this could be a very numerous recurring instances.
Commissioner Tarkanian, you're correct. We could, the county could provide a value for what the county is contributing when we do the calculations for basically the split between the county and the residents. You're correct, we could do that. It would increase, of course, the total cost, but it would be a credit to the county.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, I'm sorry, Chief, I've known you too, way too long, guy. Anyway, how many neighborhoods are in the same situation as, as they are in Pittman Terrace? It would seem to me that with the, the services of KGID and RHGID and the one at, at the beach, I don't know why I'm losing that. I've worked there for fifteen years. Anyway, the one down there at Zephyr Cove, it would seem to me that probably eighty percent of the area up there has adequate water. Am I incorrect in that assessment?
You know, there's easily ninety percent or greater of the, our area, our fire, our, our county has adequate fire district up here. This is just a, I don't know if you guys can see this very well, but this is Kingsbury GID covers this area. We've got Elks Point Round Hill GID covers this area. This is Cave Rock Resort, Zephyr Cove, Skyland. This is all county up to Cave Rock. In Cave Rock, we just contributed a lot of money through the Fire Act to help with the, the funding of the rebuild of the Cave Rock system. This was a real problem system for us. And the, your pipe, I think Commissioner Tarkanian was saying, or someone was saying about the, the pipes were actually falling apart in that, that area. Now, what we're running into is when we go past Cave Rock, there's a large portion here. Some of these are estates, and they will be responsible for providing their own. So the fire code requires the, the developer, the homeowner to put in this infrastructure. What's unique about the Pittman Terrace is you have multiple homeowners that are actually, you have this large grouping of homes that all benefit from the one stand pipe. So that's right here in this area, but all the way up, this is Logan Creek up here, that has a good water system. Then we have a break in the area, and then up away, Estates, and Glenbrook has good water. So the fireboat was basically going to service this area. We already have Camp Galilee, for instance. They've already put in their own stand pipe and their own pipe because it benefits their development there, their camp. One of the homeowners of Pittman Terrace also, in Pittman Terrace, had another home that was in this area, and they paid for a pipe and developed that area as well for their needs and their fire flow to develop their property. So it's really, this is kind of a special situation. I don't anticipate us running into this situation in other areas. Many of that can be dealt with at the fire, fire department level. This was kind of a unique, special situation because of the neighborhood.
Thank you. My, my question is, where do we go from here? It looks like we had three options, and now we have two because of the, the NRS and the number of people that have objected to the forming of the assessment district. It looks to me like the only two choices, at least that I can see on here, would be to either pick up the cost of the entire project, well, actually three. Number one, the homeowner that, that put it in would have to eat it all, or number two, the county would have to eat it all, or number three, the county could pay for half and then do an assessment district at that point. But it doesn't look like it, because that would have to be renoticed to everybody. I'm not sure, Mr. Ritchie, what, what are our options that we can move on today?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Actually, if I could, I'll, I, I think I know the answer, but I'll defer to Deputy District Attorney Carrie Rossar. She's counsel for Public Works, and she's been working on this recently. So Natalie could unmute her so that Carrie could speak.
I think Natalie took care of me, if you guys can hear me.
Carrie, real quick, Commissioner Gardner, did you have a comment?
Well, I, yeah, I did. But I wanted, I haven't wanted to interrupt any of the discussion that's going on.
Okay, because...
I, I...
If you get your, Carrie will have that one as well.
Yeah, okay. So, and I spoke with Carrie early about this. So anyways, I share Commissioner Tarkanian's concerns. So, you know, this has really put us in a real conundrum. The allowance of, of the building permit in anticipation of putting in the water line that would provide the appropriate fire output and the possibility of getting repaid for that, just is, you know, it just, it's a real conundrum. I am, I am equally, as Commissioner Tarkanian is, can, you know, disappointed. It's almost unconscionable to me that the fifteen homeowners that are going to share in this infrastructure and fire protection and benefit from it from a savings in regards to fire insurance on their homes are allowing Mr. Sauer and the county to take this responsibility on and make a decision without buying into the concept as well. So Commissioner Tarkanian, I, I really, I understand where you're coming from in that regard, and I... I really, I understand where you're coming from in that regard and I, and I agree with you. I don't want to set precedences. I appreciate the fire chief's explanation that we're going to, we only have about ten percent maybe of the community that might fall outside of us and, and so this resource would allow them to, if there was a fire in another area, to bring fire tankers in, if I'm not mistaken, fill up those tankers to, to work on that fire. But, you know, Commissioner Rice and Commissioner Ingles, you've been working on this, for lack of a better term, this fire for, this little fire for over a year now, I believe, on this issue. And so I, I concur with what Commissioner Rice is saying. It's, it's either we bite the bullet and we buy the whole thing and, or we somehow form a, or we leave it up to, completely to Mr. Sauer, and I don't like that idea as well. And the, and then the other option is go back to the drawing board and start all over again. And I don't know that that's a solution either. So I'm going to have to accede to, you know, Mr. Rice, you're, you're from that area. You know it well. You've been up there for a long time. You've been fighting this fire. Commissioner Ingles, you as well. So I'm going to have to basically accede to your best feelings on where we should go with this issue. So now we can hear, I guess, from, from Ms. Rossar in that regard.
Ms. Rossar, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carrie Rossar with the District Attorney's Office. Commissioner Rice, your question was sort of specifically what can happen today? And so based on the way we have the agenda written and based on the way that the neighbors were noticed, the board, as you said, cannot form the district today. What the board can do is direct staff to go back out and renotice this project. Essentially, we would be recontacting the neighbors and telling them, look, we're looking into doing this as a fire protection project. Please send us your objections. We, I'm just going to anticipate that we get the same number of objections. If we did that, then the county's option would be to pay fifty percent and form the district anyway. The alternative, again, today would be for the board to say, look, we don't want to deal with this hassle. We think this is a program that benefits the community as a whole. You know, Lake Tahoe is an area that's of critical importance and we want to make sure to have this infrastructure in place. So staff, can you please go out and negotiate with Mr. Sauer to see if we can just acquire the standpipe as the county directly? And then staff would come back to you, the board, with whatever the best deal we can negotiate is. And at that point, the board could decide to acquire it. So those are basically the three options you have today.
In other words, it's exploration and nothing is going to be said in concrete is what I'm hearing.
That's correct.
Ms. Rossar, I might to understand your, that's your conclusion of your presentation?
Yes, unless you have any other questions.
Does any, do any of the other commissioners have anything to say or the DA's office in regard to this matter? Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I think we've indicated to the public that we're going to allow public comment on this item, if I'm not mistaken. So before we have any board action, possible board action, could we hear if there's any public comment on, on this as well?
I know I got a lot of, we got a lot of letters and I got some phone calls. Natalie, you have anybody who wants to say something?
Natalie Wood, for the record, I don't have anyone that's indicated at this time that they want it. But if anybody would like to provide public comment on this item, please chat with me or raise your hand. I do have a couple of people on the line. I'm going to unmute them one at a time. I'm not sure if they have public comment or if they're just watching the meeting. So if you bear with me, I'll go through those people. Okay, I have Rick, if you'd like to provide, provide public comment. I've asked you to unmute yourself. Okay, no response. So I'm moving on to Megan.
Hi. Do you?
Hi Megan, did you want to provide public comment on this item?
Yes, I have a couple of
So go ahead and please state your name for the record and spell it and then I will start your three minutes.
Okay, Megan Clancy, M.E.G.A.N.C.L.A.N.C.Y. And I will start with just some questions and don't expect answers back until after my three minutes, please. It seems like there's kind of a fundamental issue that is being overlooked or ignored or was Chris Sauer not required to agree to this participation that he has done in order to get his certificate of occupancy? Number one. Number two, it seems to me when looking at the location of the fire hydrant, which the count, which the residents were not given any opportunity to give input on a location or anything, that it's actually maybe not as ideal for the neighborhood as it should be where, you know, there is an old fire hydrant about midway down the street, which seems to me that that would probably offer better fire protection for everybody on either end of the street. So I'm not sure why it was selected to be where it is when there's, you know, another one midway down the street and why none of the residents were at all given an opportunity or there was no discussion about a location. So, oh, and then the other thing is this whole business of the insurance, you know, when Chris, this came down, Mr. Sauer sent a, a letter out to all of the neighbors from his attorney without really speaking to any of the neighbors, kind of threatening that, you know, there could be some insurance implications if everybody didn't agree to this and, and I don't think that was a very good tone to, you know, begin this whole process. But I question, you know, if the fire chief says that, that hydrant will be used regardless of, you know, who's paying for it or not in the event of a fire, I question this, you know, threat of, you know, insurance being canceled and that sort of thing too. I'm not an expert by any stretch, but it seems to me if the fire hydrant is guaranteed to be used in the event of a fire, then it's really not an insurance issue. So I'm not sure who could speak to any of those questions, but whoever is qualified. Thanks.
I can, Mr. Chairman, I could speak to the legal issue.
All right, Mr. Tarkanian, you have the floor.
You know, my, again, I'm, I don't practice law in this area and haven't actively practiced in quite a few years, but I do have a legal background. And one of the things legal principles are if you're aware of a dangerous circumstances with situation and you don't take measures to correct it, you would be contributory negligent if something happened. And that is where I believe the homeowners would be, if they're aware that the current fire hydrant does not provide the necessary water flow to put out a fire and then their home gets burned down by a fire. I, I believe legally you would. But, you know, that's just my opinion as a person with a legal background.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I may as well.
Chief, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. So Fire Marshal Gavon, for the record. Thank you for your comments from the community. There is no longer a hydrant in the middle of the, the, the street or down midway, the midway point. That hydrant has been removed by order because it it did not meet the fire flow. It did not meet the requirements. So when that home was rebuilt, that was in the front and that was in the yard, that hydrant was removed. It gave a false sense of security. It was not appropriate. And so that hydrant had, had to be removed. It, to speak to the distance and the location, we worked with some of the homeowners. We did look at some easement rights and Chris Sauer would have had to gone through easements to go through other property. So it made sense to work with the county without causing disruption to the neighborhood. Furthermore, we can attach to that hydrant and the code allows a thousand feet in a rural setting such as this neighborhood. So we have a thousand feet. So that hydrant will meet the requirements for all the homes on that street at its current location. Hopefully that answers your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other comments? Before the chairman, before the chairman chimes in.
Okay, Natalie Wood, for the record, I have a Richard D. on. I'll ask to unmute to see if he has any comment.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Um, do you have public comment for this item? Oh, I think that was a no. Okay, so I will go on to, I have Natalie Yanich. Do you have public comment, Natalie? Okay, no response. I have a Chris. I'll ask Chris, do you have any public comment? Okay, no response. I have another caller on. Do you have any public comments on this item?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, do you have public comment on this item?
Hi, my name's David Sylvan Chikovsky. Did you want me to spell that last name?
Um, you've already done it once, so we're okay.
Okay. Located at fourteen forty-four Pittman Terrace. I'm aware, my first question is, I'm not aware of an HOA. It was nothing in the CCNR, so I would like clarity on that. But moving on to the issue at hand, I have just direct experience installing a fire flow system at my prior home at seventeen fifty-eight US Highway Fifty, which was next door, which is next door to Camp Galilee. I encumbered all the costs, including the floating boat hydrant, that seventy-five thousand dollar contribution. This was part of the requirement in order to eventually obtain a CBO and fire department buy-off on a new build. So that is part of the policy. That's the cost of doing business. I remember the marshal stated that regardless, the height, though I paid for it, the hydrant shall and will be used regardless of who contributed to protect the neighborhood. We were given, anyway, I did not attempt to bill the county or pay, or have the neighbors pay for any of the costs. That was on me to take care of, even though my neighbors around me are benefiting. I believe it's fair and reasonable if the county was to do this to pay for fifty percent of it and not bill us for land. Because again, like Megan pointed out, nobody in the neighborhood was given an option of location and county property is going to be a lot more expensive than if somebody else opted to have a hydrant on the property. Finally, again, I'd like to say Chris took on the responsibility, just like myself, Naki and a number of other people, and he's the only one that I know of that's going after the neighbors. We have all eaten the cost and there's no hint of compensation. But I dare say that this could set a precedent that maybe all the other people that install hydrants, should they go after their neighbors and then have the county get involved. That's a big question for me. Anyway, I also appreciate and support Megan's comments. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any additional public comment. I don't see anyone else that has raised their hand, that has done so in the past. So I believe that is it from the public.
All right, Natalie, I'd like to present a few items to the commission. And, Mr. Ritchie, pay attention to what I'm saying. So if I get something wrong. Number one, we have an NRS legal situation to consider. And the way it stands right now, there are enough people in opposition and there could be more that would preclude us from making this into an assessment district. If we forge it ahead in that manner, then we get into lawsuits and an amalgamation of different things. Next, in regard to the usefulness of the, of the, the system. And the chief is the guy that's going to have to go out there and deal with it. And he has given it his endorsement and it will not only provide for this area, but all the adjacent areas because they can pull up a tanker truck and, and load it and, and it, it will add a substantial amount of support to combat a fire. So infrastructure-wise, we know that it's, it works. In the county, they greenlighted the project. They did all the review of the engineering plans, et cetera. So now what we've got left are about three options in regard to compensation for the installation. One, we get into a legal fight where we say we don't want to pay for it. Two, we split the cost. Or we just say, you know, the whole area is going to benefit from this fire hydrant because they're going to get a lot of flow of water in there. Now, in the past, I have seen this county spend money on ridiculous things and never get anything in return for it. So I am of the persuasion that this is of extreme benefit for the area. It's done and the county can pay for it and we can move on and it provides the fire protection that is needed up in that area and not just for the Pittman Terrace area. So I am of the persuasion that the county pay for this thing and we move on to the future. Thank you. I hear a motion? You gotta, you got, you're muted there a little bit.
I, I got one question, I mean, one statement I could throw out. I understand your position, Mr. Chairman, and also Mr. Rice, who has been in that area. You, as Mark Gardner has stated, you guys know a lot more about this than we do. And I certainly want to give a lot of deference to you with that. At the other, on the other hand, it's our responsibility to be frugal with the county money and not to say that we've wasted in the past. We're going to spend it in the future, although this would be a waste. It certainly would be a, a certain, a good benefit to, to that area. I was just wondering if we can table a final decision on this. And again, if you want to make the motion to pay for it all, that's fine. I, I'm not, I don't want to hold that up, but I just want to throw this out at you. Is if we could have somebody from the county go back to, I forget the name of the person who put the pipe in and say, hey, look, if this is where we're at, you got, what are you willing to pay for, I started paid for, but not be reimbursed for? And if you know that the county may not end up paying for any of this because there's still got to be a vote out there. And then going back to these homeowners who know that they may be stuck for fifty percent. It could be fifty percent plus the land and see, hey, this is where we're at. There could be additional cost. What would you guys be willing to pay for it? And maybe at our next meeting, we come back and we see, you know, how much can we get the people who are going to benefit the most of it to pay for it? And then the county pick up the rest and then we save the county some money. Just throwing it out there. It's my first real meeting. So if this doesn't work this way, I understand. I'm just trying to do what's, you know, just throwing it out there.
Well, Commissioner Tarkanian, your thoughts are well put. And with all of these water systems up at the lake, the county has been negligent over the years to the point where it is very perilous if a fire, a fire occurs. It's, the systems cannot provide adequate water to fight a fire right now. And that's what we're working on and that's what was decided by the previous board. So our own negligence, the commissioners in the past have created this problem. And this will help to offset a very perilous situation right now. These other water systems are being built out now, but they are not in yet. So the fire chief has a dilemma. He's got to have this thing. And I can understand his position. And we need to support him. And it's not just going to be Pittman Terrace. It's going to be the beneficiary. It's going to be all of that area because all those water systems up there are deficient right now until they get corrected, which the county is now obligated to do. So keeping this in mind and that the county is, and that the homeowners up there are going to be the beneficiaries of this. And I don't know if you've ever seen a forest fire crown out. It's, it's not It's, it's not, it's not a happy time. So because of all of these things, and plus the legal, uh, taffy pool that we're going to get into. I'm of the persuasion, we've got a good asset. Yeah, it's kind of odd how it was put in, but it was approved by the county, everybody's approved it. It works fine. Win, lose, or draw in a legal battle, it's going to work and be used. So I'm of the persuasion that the county pay for it because it is a good asset. Can we get on? Thank you. Your comments, Mr. Commissioner Tarkanian?
Uh, no, I, I, I can see both sides of it, I just, I, I think if we do, uh, we do it here and I don't think the homeowner who paid for the full thing should be stuck with it, I think that would be, um, wrong. Uh, what's going to happen when they have these other projects that have the same issues, are we going to pay for, um, the, the, uh, new pipes for all of them? And if we are, you know, what are we talking about cost-wise and?
Well, to answer that question, we're already obligated to do that. And we're starting with Cave Rock because it was the most dilapidated system. And it is in the process right now of being completely rebuilt with pumps, pipes, systems to, uh, uh, certify that the water is okay, it's potable, an amalgamation of things. And then when that's done, then we're going to have to do the next one, and we've got a third one to do. Because of all of the neglect by prior commissions, they just, the county just didn't get it done. And they said they were going to take over and do it, and they kept kicking the can down the road. Well, here we are. And on the other hand, too, if the county had done this project, it probably would have cost three times as much. So, I mean, I don't know, but we've got it there, we know what its cost is and we know what the benefits are going to be. And we're going to get, no matter, if we do anything else, we're going to get into a prolonged taffy pool. So.
Mr. Kate has his hand up and I was just wondering legally if we are, you know, if we're going to be responsible for all the other pipes and this is a moot point, we might as well just go ahead and do it, but.
Well, we are, we're already obligated.
Mr. Ingalls, uh, Chair, Mr. Chair, I, I believe Phil Richter, our, our Public Works Director has got his hand up, could we, uh?
He does. I'm sorry, Phil, I didn't see you there. You have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners, Phil Richter, Director of Public Works for the record. Um, so I don't want, I want to make sure that there's, uh, the point of confusion, I think, it was, uh, when we're talking about this area. County owns and operates, um, three discrete water systems up there, public water systems. That is the Cave Rock Skyland area. We also own and operate the Zepur Cove Water System. Um, and we operate a small water system at, uh, at Uppoway. There are other water systems in that area that are very good mentioned, uh, such as Round Hill, um, and, and those started to the south as well as the Glenn Brook one. Those are all private water systems operated by private entities, uh, with ratepayers internal to themselves, not part of the county. So when we talk about the pipes that are being replaced right now as part of the infrastructure, we're replacing pipeline that is part of a, uh, of our domestic water, drinking water systems and, and for the state, state water systems. As a function of installing water systems like on a public system, uh, the benefit to the residents is that, um, under code, uh, we install hydrants so that there is fire protection at the same time. The Pittman Terrace area is not part of a public water system. It's their own private system, uh, and, and, and they are not, uh, it's really their, their responsibility as homeowners in that area to maintain their own water system for, uh, right now their system is only capable, as, as Chief Givon would say, is that it's only possible, it's only capable of providing sufficient fire flow, not fire flow, flow for domestic use only. Uh, hence the reason for having this pipe needed to be installed. So really the, the burden, uh, he'd say the burden's on that, that development itself or that area. Uh, this is not a, in my opinion, this is not a county, uh, or public works issue.
All right, any comments? The other, the, the other consideration is the NRS in regard to making this an assessment district. We're going to get into a legal fight and we're going to lose. So that's another consideration. Would anybody have any further con, um, Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate your indulgence. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Just to clarify, uh, it's true that, um, the board cannot pursue an NRS, form the Special Assessment District today. But the board could provide direction to staff to proceed and basically start over, provide the required noticing. And if the county was inclined to provide half of the cost, we would be in compliance with NRS. If the board is so inclined to acquire the asset, may I respectfully request that the board frame its motion in such a way that staff has the power to negotiate with Mr. Sauer and perhaps some of the homeowners to work out, uh, it's cliche, but a win-win situation where we negotiate perhaps the best solution for everyone rather than it's, it's an all or nothing, um, uh, option.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I make a quick comment?
Yes, Commissioner Tarkanian?
That's sort of what I was suggesting, uh, is what Mr. Ritchie just said. If we make a vote now, then our hands are tied and I guess we are going to pay all of it. Um, if we allow, uh, the county to go back and negotiate with the homeowners, we might find something that's agreeable to everybody. And that's sort of what I was mentioning, uh, talking about before.
We can do that. There's a lot of difference.
I, I'd like to know, uh, what Commissioner Rice's inclination is here on this.
You know, I've been dealing with water up here for about fifteen years, ever since I got on the, uh, RE, Round Hill General Improvement District and, uh, been part of the EnerTIES and, and all of that. Um, my inclination is that, um, the entire community is going, up there is going to benefit from this. What I would like to see is the county go back and renegotiate. I, I would rather see the county only pay for half of this instead of having to pay all of this, uh, that, that money could be used elsewhere. And what I would like to see is, uh, go back, uh, renegotiate, go, uh, and, uh, see if we can come up with an agreement where the county would pay half and then the, uh, residents in the area would, uh, we, we could then form the assessment area with the county picking up half and that would be perfectly within the NRS. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ritchie, but, uh, that, that would be, uh, how I would like to see this handled. Am I correct, Mr. Ritchie?
Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. It, it is possible, there's two ways to create a special assessment district. One is by provisional order, which is through the Board of County Commissioners, or via petition. And it's possible that we could reach out to the homeowners and see if they would voluntarily sign a petition, uh, to, to establish a special assessment district for a fixed amount for these assets. So in fact, they would voluntarily agree that this is a good idea for us, you know, X price.
For that to happen, the county would be picking up half of the tab, is that correct?
Um, the board could provide direction to staff for how much you're willing to, to, yes. The county could provide half or, um, we could get the feedback from the residents, how much they feel they'd be willing to, uh, contribute and then talk to Mr. Sauer and see if that'd be acceptable. It's like any other negotiation, we're acquiring an asset, it's, you figure out what every party is willing to, uh, to pay or accept.
What is, what's the feeling of the board about that suggestion?
Is that a motion, Mr.?
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I, I, I understand, Mr. Chair, I understand your concerns about, you know, just, just all the processes and, and trying to get this issue behind us and I, and I certainly appreciate that. But, uh, if, if Mr. Rice would be so inclined to offer a motion, uh, where he's headed, um, I, I think we might be able to build a consensus here in the, in that regard. Uh, that's, that's my take on it right now. So, but I, I want to.
Rice, would you, would you care to make a motion?
I would, sir. I, I move that we direct the, uh, county to, hmm, uh, I, I move that we direct the, uh, the county to renegotiate with the, um, residents of Pittman Terrace as, along with Mr. Sauer. And that, uh, we negotiate amount that the county would pay and then see if the other, uh, owners there, uh, who are going to benefit from this standby, uh, see if they're willing to contribute. Kind of convoluted, isn't it?
Uh, it, whatever he said, I'll second.
Commissioner Rice has brought forth a motion to have, basically have the county negotiate, uh, paying half of the cost. It is seconded by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, so we have three votes in favor and one nay. Uh, the motion carries.
Who is nay?
Me.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I, that's my, I apologize.
That's right. So how do we go forward, Mr. Ritchie? Or would it be you, Ms. Rusher? Who's going to negotiate this?
Chairman, staff has sufficient direction and we will reach out.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your, uh, your feelings in that regard of just getting this done and over with, uh.
Well, yeah, and, and the, the thing is operational now, is it not, Chief? You're muted. Chief, you're muted.
Yes, thank you, uh, had to coordinate with staff and everybody to get through, but, uh, it is operational. Uh, it's, it has been, uh, vetted with the, uh, the County Engineers Office, so, um, uh, it is, it is a very good system, so, um, for such it is. I mean, obviously we would like to have a water system there, if I can say that, you know, but, um, right now, that's not where the county's at and that's not where this neighborhood's at. And certainly, um, I think it's a good precedent to set that they have, they have a dog in the fight. The county has a dog in the fight and they have a dog in the fight as the neighbors and they should all pay a share, so thank you very much.
All right. DA's office, the ball's in your court. All right, next item. Okay, this is item seven. For presentation only. Public hearing on the intent of the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nevada to issue a general obligation, limited tax, water bonds additionally secured by pledged revenue in the maximum aggregate principal amount of sixteen million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of the improvements to the Cave Rock Water System or other water projects. Terry Willoughby and Zach Waddle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby for the record. Um, as you may recall, we've taken several steps towards this, this is a state revolving loan that is issued in the form of bonds. I want to note that it was approved by the State Board for financing water projects yesterday with a loan forgiveness amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, this is the final step and I'll let Zach fill you in on the technical details.
Thank you, Ms. Willoughby, Zach Waddle, District Attorney's Office. Um, this is a statutory required hearing prior to the issuance of these water bonds. Uh, it is not an action item, it's merely an opportunity for the county commission to, uh, allow the public to, um, offer whatever comment they would like on the proposed issuance of these bonds. So, Mr. Chair, all you need to do is simply open this for public comment, uh, take public comment. Um, and then, um, you're done with the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Waddle. Uh, one quick question now, this is a revolving line of credit from the state, is that correct?
It, it, it is, uh, and I, I think Ms. Willoughby's probably better equipped than I am to answer technical details about the nature of the funding. But it's, it's a bond that's, that's issued by the state from the revolving fund, uh, at the state level.
So, Ms. Willoughby, uh, as the project proceeds and as we, we need the, the money, we, we just go to the state and right now we're saying the maximum amount would be sixteen million. Is that what we're looking at? You're, you're muted.
I was waiting, had to have permission to mute. Terry Willoughby for the record, correct, this is the project, it's been before the board about three times. And we've discussed the project before, it is for Cave Rock Projects. And this is what the maximum we expect the project to be.
Is, do you know if this is a fixed interest rate or reflect, or an adjustable?
I don't remember, we, I can look that up, um, we covered that at a previous board meeting. It also was approved by the Debt Management Commission in December.
I don't know, Commissioners, a hundred and eighty-five K is looking pretty inexpensive right now.
It's true.
Commissioner Gardner, do you have a comment?
No, I, I was laughing at your comment, I, no disrespect intended, by the way.
Oh, I.
I was, I was chucking a little wrong with you.
I'll tell you, when I heard that dollar mine, I was done. Cave Rock has been dealing with this for years now and that's, the system is completely dilapidated. And, uh, so when they came up with this sixteen million dollar figure, it kind of rocked me back because that's a chunk of change. And it can show you the, the depth of the necessity to get these things done. And just for the fun of it, we have two more to do. I don't know if they'll be this expensive, but, uh, you know, you get over there and the engineering with all the rocks and things like that, uh, creates a huge, uh, consideration. And it's not an easy project at all. But sixteen million is a lot of money. And I don't know.
Terry Willoughby for the record, we only pay what we draw down, so it is.
Yeah.
Revolving fund.
You just made me feel better. So, anyway.
A question for Ms. Willoughby.
Yes, Commissioner Rice.
Um, Ms. Willoughby, it, it's my understanding that, um, most of the money that's going to be used to repay these, uh, uh, the bond, uh, is the, um, assessment that the, uh, the residents up in that area are paying in addition to the regular water rates.
So you, you want to chime in?
For the record, that's correct. It, there are special assessments in the, um, Cave Rock, in the Tahoe system. This will be paid back from the water rates.
So the, the, the cost of that will not be borne by, uh, by those other than the people on the water systems at the lake that are now owned by the County of Douglas, is that right?
It's paid back from the water fund.
So ju- just so every, Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chair, if, if you don't mind, Zach Waddle, DA's office. So ju- just so everyone's clear on the record, the, the repayment of the bonds is projected to be covered by the water rates, yes. The, the full faith and credit of the county is required to be put behind the bonds due to the nature of the SRF loan. Um, so, so it is a, a general obligation bond, if, if you want to call it that. But, um, through, through the material that was previously presented to the board, uh, the water rates are projected to, to cover, um, the, the, the bond repayment. the water rates are projected to cover the bond repayment.
That's correct. Terry Willoughby, for the record, it's pledged by water, pledged water revenue.
Thank you.
Mr. Ritter, do you have anything to add to this? Phil, you're muted.
Yeah, no, I was waiting, I was waiting. Sorry about that. Phil, your director of public works for the record. No, I think Zach handled it appropriately. This is, this is not a tax, this is not funded by taxpayer money. With the exception of, as Terry said, it's a general obligation bond, so there's that sort of commitment, but the payback is to rate the rate pairs for the system and the water system itself. And our recent water rate study that was just completed a little over a year ago and established the water rates accounted for this type of financial investment. And the firm that's doing the bond rating right now, or the assessment here, has confirmed that our financial status is, or financial health is, as the water utility is sufficient to cover these bonds.
Mr. Ritter, this is referred to as an enterprise fund?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments or questions? Alright, this is for presentation only. So, at this juncture, we'll go on to the.
Mr. Chair, Zach Waddle, DA's office. So, this item, this item is intended to allow the public to offer whatever comment they want on the proposed debt issuance. So, I'd ask that you open it for public comment, see if there is any. If there's not, we'll move on. If not, we'll take the comment, and it can be considered by the board.
Good point. Natalie, do you have any comments?
Natalie Wood, for the record, yes. If anybody would like to make public comment at this point, please send me a chat or raise your hand. I will go through who we have on the line and unmute them one at a time. Please state your name for the record and spell it, and I will start the timer. I'm going to start with Jim Slade. I don't believe that he has public comment. Jim, do you have public comment? Okay, nothing from Jim. Moving on. The next one I have is Chris. Chris, do you have public comment? Okay, nothing from Chris. Moving on. Natalie, do you have public comment?
Natalie, you're just talking about public comment on this item, right? Not closing public comment, is that correct?
Correct. Public comment on this item only.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing from Natalie. Marcus, do you have public comment on this item?
No, I do not.
Okay, Richard D., do you have public comment on this item?
Natalie, the chief has his hand up.
I sent a text, since my voice is kind of out, like I mentioned earlier. Richard D., R-C-A-T-R-D-D-E. Thank you.
And we can hear you, Richard, so if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to state your public comment.
All I was saying is that for the local residents, it would be nice to know what the terms of the bond are, what the rate is, what the maturity is, et cetera, in each meeting, since we don't always have those notes to go back to readily available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Natalie?
Mr. Commissioner, thank you.
Chief has. Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
I just wanted to applaud county staff for the hard work in finding this funding and making this work and improving that water system. It's very important to us. That water system had numerous issues on it, to the point where we would connect and do the water tests and the fire flow tests, and the system would actually break apart. So, we very much appreciate how aggressively the county dealt with this issue and found the funding and made this happen.
Thank you. I have one more. Do you have public comment? Please state your name and spell it for the record. There is no name stated for the record for that one, so I stopped that one.
Well, Mr. Dude, you just got canceled.
Okay, so I don't have anyone else, sir. So, I went through the list and gave everyone the opportunity to provide public comment.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, the next item is closing public comment. But I had a observation I would like to make before we go to that, if there's nothing else on the agenda.
Commissioner Gardner, you have the floor, and you've got one hour. Comments.
I promise you, I promise you, Mr. Rice, I will not cut into your martini time. I won't take the full hour, maybe fifty-five minutes. No, what it is, is we have postponed and tabled a lot of the items that were previously on this agenda to the February, first meeting in February, the first Thursday in February. That observation indicates that although we do not know what's coming forward to us in February, rather than go late into the evening, perhaps, maybe the chair would consider, depending upon the length and what it appears to be on the agenda on that particular date, perhaps we could look at moving that start time to nine AM, where we've done in the past sometimes, anticipating a long agenda. So, I would just ask the chair to consider that as an option on that first meeting in February. Thank you. That's all I had.
Chairman Gardner, all options are on the table. As long as it doesn't cut into happy hour.
Well, that's what I'm thinking about.
None of these marathon meetings. Well, some of the items, we, you know, we may defer to the next meeting. We don't know. When we start putting everything in there, and there being new pressing agenda items that need to be handled, you know, we could go into having a marathon meeting. So, when we're starting to pull that agenda together, we just need to be flexible and figure out how to approach it. You know, and make sure everybody is going to be available and things of that nature. I'm certainly going to be considerate of all Commissioners in the event that they have family or emergency problems because it's best that we're all here and we can participate. And these things do come up. So, we'll take what you commented on to heart, and we will we'll see how this agenda stacks up. Because you're right, it'll probably be quite a few items.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a request, since Mr. Gardner asked for that. Do any of the Commissioners have an issue if we had a nine o'clock start time? Does that work for everybody if the chairman goes that direction?
On Commissioner's Day, I leave my entire calendar blank. So, just in case.
It's good. You never know, Wes. Well, I mean, you know, we're trying to be realistic about the timeframe of these meetings or these presentations. And so, we'll have a pretty good idea how long this is going to take. We're being realistic about it. And if there's something we can defer to the next meeting, it's not that critical, we can certainly take that into consideration to achieve our objectives and get it done. Anything else? Any comments in regard to boards or committees or closing comments from any of the Commissioners or from the community?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you're aware or did not, the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority and the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority have been approached by the NHL as well as NBC. And we will be getting this winter professional NHL games being played here at the Lake Outdoors.
Go Knights, go!
I thought that that would be something of interest to most people on the board here.
Are we expecting that Lake Tahoe to ice over to accommodate this?
No, they are.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
That's alright. We ice over frequently, trust me. No, they're going to bet on outdoor rink in complete, just like, it would be similar. Similar, I would assume, the rink that they put up in Reno every year. Or not this year, but in years past. And it's my understanding that it will be without, you know, the games will be played without audience, so. We will be keeping in line with and not getting crosswise with our governor. And it's an event that could expand over time. The NHL as well as NBC are the sponsors, are very, very pleased that they're going to be able to do this at Lake Tahoe. They looked at five different areas before settling on us. So, that's a real feather in the cap for Lake Tahoe. And that's all I have.
And people can bet on the games. It's in Nevada.
As a man said, go who?
Go Knights, go! You gotta get that chant down. Go Knights, go! Alright, any last comments?
I think we have, I think we have scheduled closing public comment, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair.
Yes, that would be next. Natalie, you're on.
Natalie Wood, for the record, I do have two individuals that have noted they would like to do closing public comment. We'll start with Jim Slade.
I'm getting there. Jim Slade. I stand by my closing comments, public comments that I made at your last meeting. I do not believe that any of my comments were a personal attack, and I certainly didn't say that anyone had done anything illegal or unethical. That I was pointing out when campaign contributions were made is simply to state a public fact. I imagine that those contributors, to which I refer as development and gaming interests, all longtime county interests knew when the public reporting period ended and knew that any contributions made after March thirty-first would not be reported until after the election. That's not to say that that's illegal or unethical, simply a statement of fact. All their contributions to candidates Walsh and Tolbert were also made after March thirty-first. On Agenda Item One on January fourth, when a new Commissioner tries to make a motion to appoint Mr. Rice as chairman, when there's already a motion on the table, that's inappropriate. For him to say, quote, "I think it's very important that this board come together and work together just prior to doing that," raises the question of why. I think it's relevant to that agenda item to point out that the campaign contributors and outlook that Mr. Tarkanian shares with Mr. Rice. In many cases in the past, when the nomination of chairman or other similar issues are on the agenda, even if there's a difference of opinion by board members, in the end, when the consensus of the board is clear, the board agrees to make the choice unanimous in an attempt to show a certain degree of cohesiveness. That was not done or apparently even considered in this case. That lack of courtesy implies that divisiveness that characterized the board in recent years is likely to continue. On Agenda Item Eight at your last meeting regarding each Commissioner's individual goals and priorities for board action going forward, Mr. Tarkanian stated, started his comments, saying, "I hope I can bring some kind of cohesiveness together." When his prior and subsequent comments belie that desire, there's nothing wrong with pointing out that inconsistency. It was clear that some of Mr. Deputy DA's Ritchie's comments were directed at me and my comments from two weeks ago. I would ask him to inform me exactly what comments he found objectionable, where he thought I, if anyone had done anything unethical. Stating what special interest groups or individuals have contributed to someone's campaign when it seems to help explain a Commissioner's statements or actions is merely pointing out public facts and concerns. Elected officials must expect a certain amount of public criticism. After all, free speech is a bedrock and principle of our democracy and is the First Amendment to our Constitution and our Bill of Rights. Ask Commissioner Engels if he's ever been criticized, or recent Commissioners Walsh, Nelson, and Penzel. Public officials need to be somewhat thick-skinned and only make matters worse by responding to each and every criticism that they don't like. The county should not attempt to contravene the public's First Amendment rights by claiming that any and all criticism or statement of fact is a personal attack. That would be contrary not only to the public interest, but also to our Constitution.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, I do have Marcus that wanted to provide public comment as well.
Okay.
Marcus, please state your name for the record, and then I will start your three minutes.
Marcus Zinke again here. Look, I think my comments were misconstrued on the first go-around here. And as they were approached by Mr. Tarkanian, I didn't say anyone's name. I listened to what the DA said, and I followed through with his announcement of the NRS and the statutes that are given forth to us in for a public comment. I will use the Record Courier for that, as I suggest the board members do. And that's all I was saying. It's not what is said, it's that it is said. And this is not a forum for dirty laundry of individuals on the commission. Rather, this is a forum and a commission by a given name of Commissioners to get things on the table and provide for our community based on the needs of the constituents. So, I'm not going to sit here and have my words twisted or turned around. I did nothing inflammatory. I just, I think if we're going to use our time as Commissioners to air dirty laundry and to air personal grievances, not grievances of the county, not worries of the county, but personal in nature, I think this is not the time or the place. And the Record Courier was available to said individual, and he did in fact use it. So, I think moving forward, if we can refrain from personal attacks, especially if they're on a basis where people cannot defend themselves, as was mentioned by the aforementioned person that said this, we would be in a much better place both as a county and as people. Thanks.
Okay, I have Kira that noted that they have public comment. Kira, please state and spell your name for the record, and then you will be given three minutes.
Hello.
Hi, go ahead. State and spell your name for the record, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Kira.
I could not hear that. I'm not sure if you want me to continue with that one.
Yeah, that audio was inaudible. So, that one can be deleted. There's no point in even saving that.
Okay. I do have two additional people on the call. Richard D., do you have closing public comment?
No comment, thank you.
Natalie Janich, do you have closing public comment? Okay, nothing from Natalie. It looks like Commissioner Gardner had his hand up so I'll unmute you, sir.
Commissioner Gardner. Yeah, that's all I was asking for you to do is to unmute me. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I don't see, oh, sorry, I don't see any additional public comment from any participants outside of the board.
Commissioner Gardner, do you have a comment?
No, no, sir, I did not. I, no, thank you.
So, there's no more public comments? Mr. Ritchie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Just to clarify, public comment is intended to allow people to share their views with their elected representatives. Both the AG and the Ninth Circuit, which is a federal appeals, the Ninth Circuit has long recognized the First Amendment rights of expression are more limited during a public meeting than in other public forums, such as, for example, a street corner. The Nevada's Open Meeting Law and the rules adopted by this body limit public comment to issues that are within the jurisdiction and control of this public body. That people may have issues regarding who makes con- campaign contributions to an elected official or when those campaign contributions may, may, may be made. Or, uh, they may have comments about other elected bodies and how they are functioning. Uh, we just had a presidential election, and I'm sure a lot of people have opinions on that. However, this body may restrict public comment to policy decisions by this body over which this body has jurisdiction and control. So, um, to put it simply, this board can limit public comment to things that this board can take action on. It may be relevant, uh, somebody may, uh, a person may disagree with what somebody did or how they did it. But that is a more appropriate forum is, uh, on a street corner with your sign or, uh, letters to the editor. This public body may restrict public comment to those items that are germane to the policy decisions of this board. So just to, just to be clear, this body rep- this body respects the First Amendment, as does NRS Chapter 241.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one statement, please?
Commissioner Tarkanian, you have the floor.
Yeah, I do not want to have to respond to different attacks that are made upon me. I expect that to happen quite a bit. That's part of, uh, any public office, but particularly, I think, the county commission. Uh, there are things when people make falsely blatant statements that need to be corrected, I think need to be answered. And that's when I will exercise my right to respond at the end, end of every public comment. Uh, as Mr. Ritchie said, I have the right to do. As was discussed after the last meeting, it states in our public comment action that all public comments be respectful of different viewpoints and that individuals not engage in personal attacks or become disruptive. Well, I don't think they're disruptive. It's more personal attacks. I expected that would be the case, uh, moving forward. Um, and when somebody is going to make a personal attack on me that isn't true, I'm going to have to respond. I don't want to waste the board's time on it, but I'm not going to, uh, just sit back and let people, um, make lies that the constituents hear, and then they don't have a chance to, uh, hear the other side of it and believe in it. Anyways, that's all I wanted to say, and I wanted that to be on the record as opposed to a direct, uh, email to you.
Well, Commissioner Tarkanian and to all of the commissioners, I will do everything I can to monitor anything that gets off track, and they will get the gavel real quick. And Natalie, I think you've done an excellent job in, um, monitoring this meeting. The first time we have, um, participants from the community on Zoom. It went pretty well, and, uh, we, we can continue to do this. I don't know who the, the dude is, but everybody else was very civil. And, uh, we'll just take what Mr. Ritchie has said and conduct our meetings accordingly. Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, and I, and I wanted to commend you for, uh, opening this back up and allowing at least this, uh, move forward to bringing us back into in-person meetings. And at least allowing the public to, uh, to join us on this and, and offer comments. And, uh, it's obviously a lot easier to control, I'm sure, uh, uh, in person, when a person gets up to the microphone, it's probably easier to control than, than this format. But at least, this is a step forward, and I believe that our public appreciates that, and I commend you for making that move, Mr. Chair. So thank you very much.
Thank you to all of the commissioners and the participants. Um, it seemed to have worked okay, and I agree with Commissioner Gardner. Uh, we want to get back to having in-person meetings as soon as we can. And Mr. Katz, you watch that governor and find out when we can start doing it. So, on that, if there is nothing further, this meeting is considered adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Good day. It was a pleasure to see you guys.